We're good, nobody on?
I've officially called this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council to order. Welcome to this, there's some guests and everybody for this first August meeting. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Staff changes or like?
I would move to approve the agenda as submitted yesterday.
Thank you Greg.
Second.
Paul. Moving second to move forward with the agenda. Most recent agenda, all clear to that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This communications is part of the meeting where it's open comment for anybody that wishes to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda. There are copies of the agenda in the back, so if you are speaking to something on the agenda below where it comes up, easy order here, but is there anyone here? Speak, the public comment section. Hearing none, and do we have anything online?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, not having anybody on Zoom call, we will move forward on this to consent agenda with five items listed. How many, one comment, I've got, um, Senate Jay Commission, five people, and I've got two people that I'm thinking about, so I couldn't give you the fifth one to finish that up, but I think we've got somebody in the hopper here, they just need to get back to it. And then we actually have two people on the bench now for Parks and Rec that we haven't been able to appoint, but that expressed an interest in it. I guess, uh, being on that side of the commission is a high priority for everybody, it should be. Consent agenda.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda that's presented.
Paul. All right. Move, pardon. Hall to Mark. Moving second to approve the consent agenda, all clear to that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. First public hearing is on construction bid for the street improvements for the Fourth Street Northwest Street Repair Project. Had a big crowd for the open house, a lot of neighbors were here. I think you saw, you read over, I read over half of them, had that. It's actually, I didn't say for the whole thing, but, um, you can help that both architects here and hopefully there weren't anything that they could explain. Is anybody here to speak to that, um, on the public hearing on that Fourth Street Street Repair Project?
No, I would move to close the public hearing.
Can I say second?
Second.
Moving second to close the public hearing, all clear to that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And we move on to G1, which is Resolution 8-5-2024A, making award for construction bid for street improvements for the Fourth Street Northwest Street Repair Project.
Eight bidders, um, yeah, it was. And Midwest Concrete was the apparent bidder at $349,587, or about $100,000 under.
There's quite a range.
Yes.
But almost all eight were under that.
Yeah, there were quite a few that were pretty close, that's always a, at least when you have two or three bidders, at least they're close to each other.
Either second or third, type went out the bid, had a substantial, winning bid was substantially under, was the architect.
Yeah, I'm still in that group.
Yeah. Definitely under his architects.
If there are no other questions, having grown up on that street, I know it very well. I know it's needed. So I would move to approve Resolution 8-5-2024A to award the construction bid for street improvements for Fourth Street Northwest to Midwest Concrete.
Thank you, second, can I say second?
Second.
Move, pardon. Moving second to approve the resolutions presented on the Fourth Street Project. That is a roll call vote, so Marsha, would you?
Turner.
Yes.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Got to mention, again, being that Scott is on vacation and offered to be on Zoom, but I thought we were okay, so I better be on vacation. Going back to E2, officially open public hearing of plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimate costs for the Lester Burris Center Generator Project. And officially open the public hearing on that topic. And is there anyone here in the public to speak to that project?
Were you going to present today at this meeting what the cost is, or is that what we go to the resolution?
So the actual cost of, or the engineer's estimate is just over $100,000, but we have a $100,000 grant. And then the Lester Burris, local auction sales tax that goes to the LBC will cover any cost overruns and there's a heavy balance there to cover any expenses, so. Costlessly it will be minimal.
And you have that level of insurance, the next time we have a major emergency, you could be able to have a generator on a building that's on Sixth Street.
I would move to close the public hearing for the LBC Generator Project.
Greg, can I say second?
Second.
Moving second, I think it's definitely to close the public hearing on the Burris Center Generator Project. All clear to that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And we move to G2, Resolution to adopt that. Generator Project.
I would move for Resolution 8-5-2024B, adopting quite a specification, formal contract, and estimate of costs for the Lester Burris Center Generator Project.
Paul.
I'll second.
Second. Moving second, move forward that resolution on the Lester Burris Generator Project. If you're ready to vote, that is a roll call vote, Marsha.
Anderson.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes.
And that resolution passes. Moving to G3, that is the one you wanted table, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you need a, um, movement table? Thank you. Paul, is there a second?
Second.
All correct. Moving second to table, G3, and this is not for any negative reason, this is just not getting information back on the tire basis, so it's, well, likely going to be on the next meeting.
Well, it lightened our load.
It lightened our load. It's not the best.
Three minutes.
And that is, that is a.
You can voice vote.
Voice vote that one, yeah, okay. Let's voice vote on that much table. All clear to that motion, table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution four, on the final plaque of Spring Metal Heights Third Edition in the City of Mount Vernon, Iowa.
I know that you have received some phone calls, but I'm sure your facility was not holding up this process by any means, so, um, this would extend Davis Drive basically to the center section of Spring Metal Heights, um, connecting those sticks, so it'll be, now it'll be through the center and the park is going to be completely surrounded. It will not be a fully active park yet because they're, they utilize that for sanitation purposes, so that'll have to be recreated when everything is done, but other than that, I know they have a few of these lots already sold, and as soon as they improve, most of the builders are going to be out there.
And again, PNC has approved this, City Council approved this in 2017. The only change to that is the moving of the trail by just.
Yes.
Or one house.
And then B and K can later accept it.
I was going to ask this and ask him, was the city going before this? So you all, was it Monday night?
I would move to approve Resolution 8-5-2024D.
Greg, can I say second?
Second.
Craig and Mark. To approve the final plaque of Spring Metal Heights Third, that is a roll call vote again, so Marsha.
Engel.
Yes.
West, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
That motion passes. Moving on to 2024E, all the improvements for Spring Metal Heights Third addition to maintenance and operation.
I did hear that tonight, uh, a report from B and K verifying Hall and Hall, so these are, that's a triple check, I guess, if you want all that. So Hall and Hall will certify that the improvements were put in based upon their design, and then B and K will certify that they did attend a walkthrough and did the inspections, so at this point, uh, the improvements associated with Spring Metal Heights Third Edition are now ready to come under the city's name.
Further discussion of questions to staff?
I will move to approve Resolution 8-5-2024B, including, yeah.
Accepting the public improvements for Spring Metal Heights Third Edition for maintenance and operating.
Mark. Second. Paul. Moving second to approve 8-5-2024E. I think we'll move it there once this is settled, there's a quick movement there. That is a roll call vote again, Marsha.
Turner.
Yes.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
That resolution passes. That's why there's a final flat survey two in 2856 of City of Mount Vernon, Iowa.
Chris, I'm geographically challenged. This is west of Highway one and north of Highway 30. So this is, this is by the auction.
So this would be in between the bypass and then auction. So this would actually be a portion, that parcel A on 2856 would actually include a portion of, um, that business. So there's, the challenge with, um, this property that Quick Star wants to acquire is that it's two different property owners, so they can't complete the normal subdivision submittals. Number one, they don't only get, and two, it's two different parcel owners, so each individual would have had to gone through a separate subdivision process. And, um, neither of those individuals wanted to do that, so obviously Quick Star signed on without a line and purchased the property. So it's kind of a cart before the horse type of situation where they're creating a needs and bounds description with an all the survey, and then they'll have to come back in the future and do a third plat that will extend Rachel to the west. So if you can imagine, Rachel kind of swings up at an angle to Highway one, it would be extended across, and then it'll dip back to the west edge. Based upon our conversations with the DOT, that will end up in a fall sack at some point. Not ideal, but it'll, it'll work.
It's a valued plaza option, and it's continued discussion with Quick Star, so it's moving across this.
I'm asking my finger, do you like?
This one here.
There are two plats, you'll need two motions, please.
I would move to approve Resolution 8-5-2024F, and first of the two.
Second.
Craig and Stephanie. Moving second to approve Resolution 8-5-2024F. And if we have no further questions, then I'm ready to vote. Marsha.
Anderson.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes.
Resolution passes. I have sounds in the same deal.
I'll move to approve Resolution 8-5-2024G for survey 2857.
Stephanie. I'll be Mark. Again, ready to vote? Roll call?
Engel.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
West, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
And that resolution passes. Next item is the Resolution Order of Construction of Certain Public Improvements Between Preliminary Plans, taking a date for a hearing, thereon, and to bid, therefore, improvements known as a 2024 Mount Vernon Pool Improvements Project.
So the only thing that I would say to this mayor is, um, if and when we get to that point where you talk about your first meeting in September, you'll notice that this resolution has September 3rd, so if you pass this resolution, let that date in, pretty much locking you into the Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah.
If that's okay. Otherwise, you can hold on this one, go down and consider that if you're planning to change it to Wednesday, and I can change the date in this resolution.
You're just lucky I'm not singing in the choir this fall. I'll be here.
I thought of you when you put that on, it was like, oh, Craig.
I'm the only one who's lucky to be here.
So that was a good start. The estimate on this project is still going to be about 1.25 to 1.5 million dollars depending on the apparatus that they've chosen and were by the state, so, um, bids would come in August 29th, we would act on it September 3rd, we would probably hold construction, pre-construction meetings in the middle of September, and construction would probably be some hope that it would start in October.
Nice job keeping this moving along.
Uh, Matt? Keeps water that moving.
The incentive is to have it done.
Yes.
If you're not impacting the season's days of operation, hopefully we'll share the same thing on the other end next spring.
We hope so. Weather will be a big key to that.
Well, we're still just not sure the apparatus is yet.
So the challenge with the apparatus is the state is backlog by like three months. I think they said, um, the state has to approve anything on this construct, so two of the designs that they've submitted previously have come back and said they were denied in another area, just opened it off the table. Iowa's a little bit more stringent than surrounding states, so that waters it first of all. It'll still be nice, it's just a little more vanilla.
With that, I approve Resolution 8-5-2024H. Thank you, is there a second?
Is that with the September 3rd date? Paul?
Yes.
I'll second.
Paul, second. It's moving forward, second to move forth, I have G8. No other questions or any explanations needed? Ready to vote on that? Marsha, it's yours.
Engel.
Yes.
West, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on to the final survey 2870 of the City of Mount Vernon, Iowa.
So this, um, is kind of what I call the cleanup situation, you have two downtown businesses that once on First Street, um, this particular parcel is where the houses were, the city helped the landowner tear down, and essentially what they're doing is just adding those spaces or getting the potential to have those spaces to the two buildings adjacent to. It's really on the verge of being too small to redevelop. And I'm assuming given the limited amounts of parking in the downtown, the two businesses will be interested in additional space.
Will they be marked as parking spaces?
If that's what the businesses choose to use it.
They'll be there again.
They can be creative, they could do all sorts of things with that, put an outdoor eating, um.
I know Yox for.
Margarine dinner.
Health events and stuff.
Sure.
In the back, and they have such an interesting, um, current backyard that makes its way to the alley. This would definitely square up their property.
And that's the, I would just say, that's the main motivation, is to really help Yox out of it. I think I used the word awkward in the, um, the application for the status, but they, if they want to stay off of our property, literally they have to wind way around and then back in, they have no parking back there, and then if they want to do an event like we did at Heritage Days, which made me quite nervous, um, they end up on our property, and so I think it's much cleaner to just run that lot line straight back and let Yox take over that part of it, so. And I also like to add, I'm only here because this, this board had great foresight to help us bring those buildings down. We didn't have that capability. The buildings not only were their own ISO and dilapidated in their own right, they were literally pulling first and first building apart. And so we, if we were to fire that building, we had to bring those down, but really without the capability to do that, and then I'll just add that your 50K investment was matched by us 7X, we put in 350K into that project, so I think you did a good job.
Pretty good.
You got a good return on investment, and now we're just trying to clean it up and make it better for everybody back there.
Those buildings seem to go.
They had to.
A little of the damage that we're doing to your frontage, yeah.
So anyway, I just, again, this, I think this is the first time in face to face I'm able to thank the council for that assistance.
Thank you, Greg. With that, I approve of Resolution 8-5-2024. Aye.
Thank you, yeah.
I'll second.
Approving.
I'm sorry.
Survey number 2870 of the City of Mount Vernon.
Now.
Paul and Stephanie, I've moved forward, probably, glad that's sort of a class space. Don't think we have any other questions or comments, but, um, it's a very cooperative effort all the way around, the result of the city. And I think we're ready to vote on that, Marsha.
Turner.
Yes.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes.
Anderson.
That resolution passes, and, uh, thank you for being here, and thank you for your comments, and, uh, thank you for working with everybody on this.
Well, the city was great helping me through the process. I needed a lot of education on how to get it done, so, very helpful.
Great thing to do.
Thank you.
Made it an easy decision.
Out of 10 other resolutions is designating the Sun as official newspaper for publications for the City of Mount Vernon for the next two calendar years. I do see the guy, once all well, and where we are, yeah.
Yes, and I completely overlooked it.
Kind of retroactive.
Yes, very retroactive. I take for granted because obviously the Sun is here.
Yeah.
And we don't do it every two years, so when I do go in, I only look back one year just to make sure that I'm not missing, uh, certain appointments and things like that, so it does get overlooked.
Nathan should remind us where to link.
Your subscription's expired.
Needs to be an official action here.
I will move to approve Resolution 8-5-2024J, making the Mount Vernon Sun the official newspaper of this council.
Moving second to approve the Sun as official newspaper for our organization, and, uh, ready to vote, ready to vote on that, Marsha?
Anderson.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes.
Resolution passes, and, uh, pardon. Interacting with other mayors, we're very lucky to have a small town newspaper, the right attitude of the newspaper, and a very supportive newspaper, so, um, thank you to the Sun and personnel, and to your ownership and everything on.
Yes.
It's been a long-term relationship through a lot of different orders, but we're still there. I had another item added, G, ah, sorry, G11, fire truck disposal, is that correct?
Correct.
Have a lot of details on that here.
So, um, Resolution 8-5-2024K, which Marsha tells me as a record, by the way.
You've got to give to Z.
But you tabled Z.
It's a resolution that's disposing municipal property, so, uh, council, if you remember, fire department, purchaseable replacement, 211 is the EMS vehicle, and obviously the building itself does not have a lot of additional storage, now that the new 211 is completely outfitted, it is time to go ahead and get rid of the old 211. They have, or we are suggesting that we place a reserve on this vehicle person, so normally what we'll do in this situation is put this on gov deals, we'll place a reserve on it, if the reserve is not met, um, then we can dispose of it, kind of as is. But the reserve would be 15,000, it'll be on gov deals, if we do not get that 50,000, then we are going to reach out to other county agencies and try and work out a situation.
I think we've got pretty good luck with not gov selling equipment.
Down in the answer, I see.
So this is a resolution that will be a roll call vote, I assume?
Correct.
And, um, are there any questions to staff for the extension? Do I say to ready to vote on that motion, or?
I approve Resolution 8-5-2024K, approving the disposal of municipal property as prescribed. We've all.
Second.
Moving second to move forward, the fire truck disposal, and ready to vote, Marsha, please.
Turner.
Yes.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Any other motions for approval? First item is the claims list, recent claims list. Any questions or go on, or ready to vote on that?
We move to approve the claims list.
Greg, can I say second?
Second.
I'll take Mark and now, sorry. Craig and Mark, um, moving second to move forward, the claims list is presented, all clear to that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. First of a couple Ferguson Water Works, first in voice.
$11,258.85 for the first, and the second is $205,573.75. Again, this is, this first half, um, or actually first 60% of Ferguson built would be for the actual equipment, the actual meters that are something else.
Where are they staging it from?
So they're being stored out of the Hall of Works, I agree. All that ice concrete that they tore last year coming in.
Put it in the last base there.
Let's keep, the first. I feel we're probably going to be putting some light poles in there at some point as we stage that.
First Ferguson bill for the 11,000 plus. Ready to move forward with that?
Move approval of invoice number 049148.
Second. Presenting, okay. He falls, is there a second? Paul, Mark. Moving second to move forward on the first Ferguson Water Works bill, in voice. Ready to vote on that, all clear to that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Same idea on the next one, just luxury voice.
Move to approve Ferguson Water Works in voice, 0487918-1.
Mark, can I say second?
Second.
Stephanie on that. Moving second to move forward for the second, first as well as in voice. No comments, all clear to that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We're about a month away from getting that project started, aren't we? Aren't they?
Yeah. They want to be done before Christmas.
I know, I know.
Wow.
That's great.
Exactly. They're pretty confident. I'm not.
You gotta find everybody at home.
Yeah, so there'll be a series, I believe, of five, five or six notices, um, that they'll be in charge of sending to property owners, so.
Communications can be important.
Yeah, the other big parts of this, obviously, is they're going to need inspections for us, so, so the federal guidelines on flood-based inspections, um, so.
We can turn it around before, so we, uh, wait. Can we go on now?
Yep.
We're scheduling the September second meeting, we may have already kind of decided that, but, uh, this is where.
Move approval of moving the September second meeting to September 3rd.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second to reschedule the, uh, maybe Tuesday, September 3rd. All clear to that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. And Scott did weigh in that it didn't make any difference to hear me go away, so we're good, there. On five is discussion consideration of the site plan for the Mount Vernon May and Trust Parking Reconstruction Project. Council action is needed, I think we have a handout about that at our station.
Yes, so, um, Mount Vernon Bank, he is looking to do some parking lot improvements. Their parking lot has deteriorated somewhat, so, uh, looks like a fairly extensive project. They're going to redo some of the alleys while they're at it, they'll remove some retain walls and build those. So excited for them, it'll be, I'm sure, so slight disruption while they're under construction, but, um, yeah. I know that, uh, all of the employees at Mount Vernon, they're excited for this.
Hi, Brian.
I don't know if they gave you a specific timeline.
They'd want, they'd like to go to this next week.
Well, I think it'll be dependent on mother nature. If they, if they can get it next week, they potentially can be under construction by the end of August. But, like I said, uh, retain laws that they're removing and replacing are a large project for themselves.
Please, before then, a year ago?
I would say that was, that would be kind of like our water project. It'll be aggressive, but maybe doable.
Are we working with them or is there discussion about a plan for parking for their employees and customers during the construction?
So I believe they're going to stage this. I don't think they're going to have, um, this all tore up at one time. So my expectation is they would probably do the area chroming thing so they can get drive through back open and things like that and then work on the other areas. I would tell them how to do their business, but I would do this in phases, if I wanted to.
And I'm sorry, why did they have to come to us for this approval?
So they are making changes to our alleys, the one.
Okay.
Leaving out all the alleyways. The second is any commercial business that makes changes to their site is technically subject to P and Z and city council. Residentially, no, commercial and industrial.
I will move to approve the site plan for Mount Vernon Bank and Trust parking reconstruction, reconstruction part.
Is there a second? Mark. Move a second to move forward approval for the site plan for Mount Vernon Bank and Trust parking reconstruction project. Any other comments, all the people that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, special consideration of the highway one storm sewer, viewing project.
I'm hoping the D I C will pay for this, but, um. Uh, they quote, um, from the new sewer, sewer, it's thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents. This is to televise our storm sewer network on highway one and its other response for, for those improvements when that project gets in there.
Stay a couple of days by the last, hopefully version. We've got an estimate quote and a vendor for the highway one storm sewer projects. Any further questions? Let's, we have a motion approval.
So moved.
Paul, second?
Second.
Paul, Mark. Move a second to move forward that project. Ready to vote on that one, all the people that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. On J seven, special consideration of the living lab agreement with Alliance Energy, streetlight pilot program, council action is needed. We have representatives from the lands here speak to it as well. Who would like to begin?
Um, I would just start by stating that we are extremely excited with each of them as one of the pilot programs that Alliance Energy has put together for this project. The next two items, seven and eight, deal with this particular project, um, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we've been discussing this for almost two years.
One.
One?
Yeah. It's been some time.
But, um, this will replace streetlights from what amounts to the intersection of A Avenue and First down to Memorial Park. What will be put in its place has multiple features. Things that I can't, I can't remember everything, maybe there are some electronic banners, there are speaker systems, um, plugins, all the things that we have discussed, I think, in the downtown over the course of last year. These pools have and, um, yeah, I'm super excited. I'll leave the rest up to, the details up to Alliance and Lori who are carrying on the torch for this project.
We're in hot spots, was that on all the polls?
We're going to be expanding wifi across all four blocks.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought that the obligations were set out really well to see what we get and what we're going to be responsible for. There's only one that I may have missed in, in there, and that is who's responsible for the removal of the existing poles and throwing them away.
It's my, it, it's going to be Mount Vernon's responsibility for that. They need to set up, you need to set up the foundations and remove the poles so that we can bring the new ones in.
Right, Eldon do that, I guess.
Well, I can assure you that it won't be Eldon doing it.
And I know some, some of the language in here, you could hire a third party and so on.
When, when we get to kind of specific details as to what the bases have to be designed, to me, there's some, um, potential wiring that has to be done. And of course, if you, the question on the wifi is whether or not we try to go cellular or just make the connection with one of, um, one of the providers in the community. Most of which have done upgrades, so I think we'll probably go with a hardwired system that's just more reliable. Thank you.
So can you, um, just talk through what push blue emergency is? I know there's a couple of them in a college town that is very appealing, but I don't know all the details. I'm making an assumption, I guess.
Right, um, so the push blue would be a two-way notification to whether it's to grease or rescue, um, uh, if, if any of those are pushed. I believe you have eight of them across the four blocks.
So the goal with this project too is, is, um, Alliance pilot program and what they're responsible for, limited obviously to this study area. But in conjunction with one another, if we choose at some point in the future to continue this, uh, we have that capability. So Cornell's aware of the project and some of the technology that we would be able to offer. One of councilperson Rose's, um, goals has been obviously public wifi in the parks. So this provides an opportunity to study, um, how much that's going to be used and, um, obviously is a big step in connecting the first street community center out of Memorial Park. And, um, the other thing that I think is quite a big piece of this is we removed the early warning system that was at the little fire station. So, uh, we were told that we did not need it, but when it comes to festivals, we will be able to, to break in and make announcements on these poles. And, um, so majority of this house today is able to travel to Platteville to see their system. I'm excited, I think we will use it more when they do, but outside of the really funny looks that we were getting for playing Christmas music in the summer. It was, it was, it's quite clear, you can hear everything that you need to hear. I do believe that our model, just because Platteville had a much larger area and they retroverted some and then constructed new. For the most part, ours are going to be new and, um, a little bit more cohesive, I think, but we have a much smaller area than they do. So I'm excited for this project.
Always been an advocate of the sound, that was something I talked about years ago and it didn't happen, but it's, this is a great case for patience pays off because this is wonderful.
Yeah, and, uh, basically, we're excited to get it underway. The, the lights themselves are period pieces and they look beautiful, so they're going to be a good addition regardless of what happens with the rest of the downtown street skate, so.
So it's a pilot project, so I'm curious to know what is, you know, what are you guys expecting to take out of it?
Yeah, so I can maybe talk about that a little bit, um, and then toss it over to Heidi. So I have got to see a lot of what you guys do in this community for the last seven years that I've been able to serve you guys. So again, I've watched you guys continue to develop your festivals and all of those things. So, um, that's really one of the reasons that you're west to approaching Mount Vernon is, um, really your progressive nature and that idea of, um, how we can really have a significant impact in downtowns that are really heavily utilized. So I think one of the things that we're just most curious and interested in is how this can be a benefit to your communication systems, to your, um, you know, events, how you continue to use this, um, for your public good. But then how that interacts with our system. So what does this mean to energy use? How are we continuing to conserve or, um, all of these different things with the different technologies that are installed on these poles? So it's really a learning process for us, that's why this is a pilot program is so, um, you know, we can really learn alongside with you as you get to go down the string. Heidi, anything else?
Now that you've nailed it.
That was one of the, um, good jobs to you is when we talk about energy conservation, um, for the most part, our streetlights are designed to, with a photo eye, so they come on at their points in the night and then they just stay on, obviously, until morning or the big light again. We do have some capabilities here to make further adjustments to that, um, throughout the evening. So that, you know, at three o'clock in the morning when there is zero individuals downtown, they don't necessarily have to be quite as bright. So, um, going back to energy conservation and, you know, communities trying to figure out ways to cut expenses, um, makes us further provide information as well.
You think Alliance, obviously the first in the, um, Alliance Iowa service area. In, uh, Platteville, one was the first installed for Alliance, that was in the Wisconsin service area, this, this was the first one to Iowa service area. So I'm sure we'll have people visiting us and checking us out. One comment that came out of the Platteville visit was, uh, ownership of the messaging. And I think they had like someone from Public Works doing the messaging where, does that have CDG on it or, um, somebody else's name on it or the, the marketing person for CDG?
Anna?
Yeah, probably Anna's local. Something that needs to be determined there because I'm not sure it belongs to Eldon, to be another person.
Well, I think we have the, I think we have a kid in Melanie, it's just a software deal. So I think we have the capability of making multiple people access that. So, um, if it's a streetlight issue, uh, the lighting part, we could just, I could plug into that and say, oh, yeah, this is, I don't even know, I don't even know what I'm talking about because we've never done it. But, um, based on the, our information we got in Platteville, um, we could plug into that if there's an issue, let's say, streetlight in general, um, and not bother to say CDG with that, that sort of thing.
I think.
Someone takes ownership of the, the events calendar.
So part of this will be electronic banners and one of the things that I think we were concerned about obviously was not turning the downtown into a street. So when we talk about kind of controlling messaging, um, the electronic banners are, are great in the fact that they can pop up, um, a weather related alert during an event. You know, so as we talk about, um, the magnitude of storms that we're seeing in, in my eight years here has been quite unnerving. So having that ability to get out information to a master of people, sometimes it's, you know, three or four thousand people in downtown. As far as, I don't, I don't know that we'll, we'll necessarily go as far as advertising per se on the banners as much as, um, the public works part will not have to spend a bunch of time hanging banners. But not every, like I said, not every pool will have them. So we can do kind of a myriad of things with wayfinding and a number of other things that we might be able to, to move forward with. And that's where I think, um, I think we will expand the capabilities a little bit more than maybe Platteville, um, was, you know, taking advantage of. So I'm, I'm excited for what we are going to be able to do locally, but I would say as far as messaging is concerned, it will probably be held in city hall. And then Jesse, Lori, possibly.
Gordon.
Kind of Gordon. That and, uh, yeah, see what happens. But I'm, I'm excited for, you know, we talked about magical night and Christmas, maybe a little of that downtown and, um, other festivals, so.
So Lori, is it your intent to have this, you know, or to talk about this Wednesday with the street skate plan? Are you, I mean, was it too early for that?
No, I, I don't think we'll include them in the street skate or Platteville, I mean, if people ask about it, we can chat about it a little bit, but no.
One of the things that I noticed in the language of this proposal from Alliance also indicated that there would be partnering with, obviously, our downtown association and, um, the street skate process to make sure that it's all coordinated as you choose style and things like that, so that's good.
And Jay, um, do you have this prospect when they were hired, so you know that whatever was chosen here will get incorporated into their design?
Great reference to the existing poles and, um, I don't know the quality of them is, or if they're available or usable on the Bryant Little Stretch of the trail.
I thought Matt was going to use them down at Davis.
Well, he, he's letting it.
He already took care of that.
There's a possibility of retaining them for that purpose, meaning they're, they are what they are and that they have some longevity in them. Because we weren't planning on replacing them until this project came up. And we're going to turn down this opportunity here with Alliance, partnership with Alliance. But if we can get something out of those light poles at another location, whether it's Bryant, whether it's Davis or whatever, recycle it, you know, let's try to recycle.
I had been hopeful about that from the beginning, but I was just kind of laying back waiting for things to unfold.
It's out there now. Any other questions for Heidi and Emily while they're here?
Please.
About that, um, living lab.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity.
As you get on those.
Super exciting.
I wasn't going to ask a couple, I can't, I can't remember what a guy from Platteville was telling us on like the long-term commitment. Since it's a program, that program's been around for so long and then, and then what to do after that sort of thing, I didn't know if he could do the light.
Absolutely, so the pilot, um, will last for ten years. Alliance Energy will cover costs for the poles and will pay for your software as a service agreement with the company eliminated concepts. So because of that, we're going to be able to do some additional studying and along, along that. Say if at the end of ten years, then the poles are officially turned over to the city where you're, you will be responsible for the maintenance, um, agreements and going forward. If at whatever reason halfway through the, in five years, something changes, we need you to remove them, there'll be a shared cost to that. And that's what's left, uh, that's what's mentioned in the living life agreement. Does that kind of cover what you were talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I couldn't remember the. Yeah, yeah, I couldn't remember the timeframe. I wanted, I thought it was 10 years, but I can't.
It is, it is, yes.
Any questions for Heidi and Emily? Thanks for our partnership with that project. And while there's Alliant representatives here, I'm going to ask a non-aggressive question and that is any movement or any traction that you hear on the Alliant side with regard to an urban trail and the purchase of that property.
I have not allowed us to check into it.
Well, as Jordan is meeting with some kind of conservation and officials are going to ride, ride the trail or kind of identify where it's at and what adjustments need to be made and how many more landowners need to be dealt with there. But I want to just keep that in everybody's mind because we are starting to make a commitment this fiscal year, our first third, I think it is, of the Bryant Road site. So keep that in people's mindset. Anything else? Thank you very much for being here and I'm sure we'll look forward to seeing you again and then we do your annual report or something like that.
I approve the streetlight pilot program with Alliant Energy.
Please call, is there a second?
Second.
This is for J seven.
Yes, yes. Move a second to move forward the living lab agreement with Alliant. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I will move to approve the downtown streetlight replacement project with Alliant.
Stephanie, for a second.
Second.
Move a second to move forward the downtown streetlight replacement project with Alliant. And for a majority vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration, third amendment to the water tower ground space lease.
So nine and ten are basically together. A few months back, staff had discussed with the council Horizon's original proposal to do some strengthening to our water tower. At the time, we agreed to negotiate with them. We don't necessarily need our water tower upgraded for this specific purpose, but it will allow us, I should say, the city will get used as will the cellular companies move in toward the future. So, so we have agreed to 30% of the cost or $41,000, $41,362.00. Half of that will be given in a lease arrangement with US Cellular and the other half then to burn. So we're essentially cutting their lease payments, monthly lease payments in half until that $21,000 obligation is met at each company. And then US Cellular is actually taking the lead on improvement.
First item I have moved is regarding the US Cellular's considerations. I would move to approve agenda item J nine water tower lease with US Cellular. Second? Please call. Move a second to move forward with US Cellular on that space lease. Do you have any other questions or comments? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And ten is the same thing on Horizon Wireless.
I would move J ten.
Please call. Yes, I'll give it to you. Move a second to move forward the same arrangement, lease arrangement with Horizon Wireless as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item is discussion consideration of the annual TAC-10 maintenance contract for the police departments.
This is just the annual maintenance software for, maintenance agreement with TAC-10 for our software RMS program.
I'd move approval of the annual TAC-10 maintenance contract. Police Department, it's presented.
Second.
Move a second to move forward the recommended discommunication contract with TAC-10. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Session consideration of additional irrigation system purchase for the nature park.
Council, if you remember, we were spending about $25,000 on, whatever you want to call it, that deep vegetation on the bottom of the pond. We completed that process for three years in a row. Obviously, it's not sustainable to spend $25,000 a year, every year. And so what we're looking to do is to spend between $6,000 and $8,000 to introduce three more irrigation systems, three more units, one more system so that we would have two areas of systems and then basically six variators. Cleaning the water flowing will obviously help. We've also talked or we're going to be talking with, you know, our representative about the introduction of different fish species that may actually help us there as well. So as opposed to, like I said, $25,000 or seeking an amount up to $8,000 to upgrade irrigation.
See the presentation, the process here, is there a second to move forward with that motion?
Yeah. I would move to approve the additional irrigation system purchase in nature park.
Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Stephanie, Mark and Stephanie. Move a second to move forward the additional irrigation system purchase for the nature park. Do you have any other questions or comments? All in favor of that motion, putting a vote on? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Closed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Eldon. Looking at things all day.
Last items areas, discussion and consideration of an invoice with Tech Specialty Services Corp. It was a business.
This is the part of the grant that starts with the residential commission secure to do exterior improvements to the visitor center. So if you've driven by there this summer, they've done some order work on the exterior and then the homeowners have done there for the last couple of weeks now, giving some plantings on the backside of the building as well, so. Any voices in the amounts of $21,205?
I'll move to approve the invoice 24006 with Tech Specialty Systems Corporation in the visitor center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move a second to move forward the repair work on the visitor center by Technical Special Systems Corp. Do you have any other questions or staff? Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No reports, no, no reports to discuss, discussion items for state council goal updates. Got a lot to pass through on that.
So really, this is just for FYI for, for the council. So I've included both documents. One was your strategic plan for the two years which we are just starting the second year of. And then, of course, a number of action-related steps that it takes to get your goals and objectives completed. Some of those have already been completed, others you can see where we're at, who's in charge of that particular item and then when we expect to have a completion. So for instance, Highway one and the second phase of the sewer improvements are both pointing to probably carry over into your next full setting session, just given their current timeframe of 26 and 27. But others should be like the street skate, the design work anyway should be completed by the end of this trip. So we had, we've talked about this for the last six months, trying to get you an update and just getting on where we're at, meeting your goals and we've finally been able to do that. So I did have one question, C A W, it's an A P, show yourself. That's just a catch-all. Meaning me or whoever I have.
No, I appreciated seeing this document again. You know, I have a copy, obviously, and I just had it right in front of us to read it and see where the few members are in cleaning, progress with that. I had just a couple of questions or comments. First on, of the, of the PDF on page 118, which is the sleaze here, the sidewalk. I get comments from folks around town saying, where are we at with that? And I know that we've talked about it a few times. It says here recheck priority, I just, recheck priority repairs, measure specific blah blah. A lot is happening, it looks like in August here. Anything to add or?
I need to get out there and get some measurements made and get that to the U K.
Yeah, part of the problem is, I think the sidewalk construction program in itself is that it changes month to month. So the northwest quadrant has been hit twice. The southwest and northeast quadrants will be hit with this next round of bidding, as will some of the areas that were missed in the northwest quadrant. We could probably just turn around and start right back over again if we need to. So one of the challenges with a program of this size is staff. It requires at least one staff person, often times two, to go out there and physically walk every sidewalk that we have, identify where we have.
Ruptures.
Yeah, heaving or spalling or any, any number of things that can be wrong with sidewalks themselves. Normally, we would push and try and get this project done and buy the November kind of timeframe. However, we did that with the northwest quadrant and one of the items that we ran into was put that back going and seeding. Very difficult to get a contractor here three months later after they packed up and left. So we would like to potentially bid that out before every contractor's lining up work for next year. We are hoping that having two quadrants and basically two and a half quadrants, the amount of sidewalk panels that need to be replaced, it will get more than one better. And that's where we're really running into an issue the last two years is.
They don't want spot work.
Yeah, it was almost impossible to find a contractor and we, we felt that we owed it to the community because they are remaining students for this work that they choose. They can do it on their own, but if they choose to be part of the project and they have three years to repay it, they didn't want them to have to pay a premium in order to make this project work.
That's fine. The only reason I brought it up is because it looked like there was a lot happening in August and in September. The bid's going to happen in September, then the contractor work will happen in the spring. And that's fine and plus I'm getting comments, so.
This will be an interesting concept in the courts since the Supreme Court ruled that cities don't have blanket immunity on sidewalk cases anymore, so.
So with that, do we have anything that we can do with those that are egregious?
So yeah, what we can do is, is make the corrections and then we can, we can file leads, tax leads that they even have to pay. So we're going to run into that situation we have with some absentee landlords that don't live in our community, but.
And even some that do.
Yes, some that do. We run into a lot of individuals that are, that will, you know, just want to grind off the edges and it works for a year, maybe two, or just right back out there, so. But there's definitely an expense here. And then the next phase of obviously all of this would be to look at gaps where we are missing sidewalks and that will be a whole other discussion moving forward.
And when you do that, just for the benefit of those that weren't here when we started, of course, my friend Jerry Eiderhouser would said, open the can of worms. You have to look at those where it's really not feasible to put a sidewalk and how does, how does, how do you manage that between both sides of the street? So there, it's not easy to, you know, echo Chris's comments.
Well, Mount Vernon isn't easy. This is the one place where we're difficult. So we do have one massive hill.
Technically, it's a pond.
When you try to make those intersection spaces ADA accessible, the cost is substantial as you saw on both thirds. So we have, we'll have our challenges and there's definitely going to have to be more than $105,000 worth of monies moving forward. If the state will leave us alone and use the tax in act, my hope is that in 2034, when we have to rediscuss that program, that we will not have more categories per se and maybe tax reduction and capital projects, that would be more open ended, so we have more monies available. But it's still a fight away to the future. So in the meantime, we'll move forward with the small program that we do have and it's a five in the next spring. I hope it's first for the summer. I hope that we'll have significant progress at least on three, three quadrants.
Billy, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I was just going to say I had not heard of it enough about this Supreme Court decision. But I'm curious to know if cities don't have blanket immunity on sidewalk cases, what if the sidewalk isn't there and there shouldn't be? You see, I'm talking about those areas that don't have it, but could be dangerous.
So the answer, there is no requirement per se to have a sidewalk, but if you're going to have a sidewalk, then they have to be built to extend. So then it becomes kind of a conversation on mobility and as a community, how easy are you making it for people to get around the community versus the instructor vehicle? So the good news is there's nothing necessarily in the books that would require us to fill those gaps.
Well, also doesn't that in itself create a priority for these sidewalks and fixing them?
Absolutely.
You know? That in itself.
I see it regularly every day, especially now where you're heading back to schools from both Cornell students and young children heading to Mount Vernon Community School District. There's definitely some areas, pockets of the community that need to be identified and worked on so that they do not have to try and walk in the street. And they need to be safe. So the, the program itself is sound and will continue to move it forward, it's just going to be slower. It's just labor intensive. They have created a computer programmer, drones, like you said now.
Roller skates don't work, just playing the roller skates. So part of it, quite frankly, is it's those nuances of, there's a lot of different situations like you just brought up. Why does he not have to have a sidewalk, but I have to spend thousands of dollars fixing my sidewalk?
I know that because I have heard that.
Yeah, there's a lot of different challenges that we're going to have to work through to prioritize the various, who, who has to do theirs first, so that is important.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think it was Iowa State Supreme Court on, Supreme Court of the United States. So I, I expect more challenges. Iowa does have laws giving cities and counties quite a bit of freedom, as long as they're not intentionally ignoring the problem. And I think that's always kind of the question. We have a program, same thing with our sewers. We clean sewers. If we get 10 inches of rain overnight, there's kind of a sewer system in the world that's going to keep up with that. But of course, I come back and said, we can't control that. And so I think our goal should be the betterment of the community, the safety, things like that, to, to move this forward. It's just, you can't give it to, it takes about two or three. It's just, you can't give it to, it takes about two reviews to get them trained on all of the things that we need to, to fix on the sidewalk. And they have to spray paint, then you have to notify the landowners, property owners, if they want to join the city's program or do it on their own. So it takes almost an entire year.
Some of those conversations are not easy.
No, and to be honest with you, the north, I'm trying to seem like I'm making excuses, but all sorts of things. During COVID, and the question was, do we really want to force people to spend $2,000 or $3,000 when just getting out of COVID period?
Yeah, I remember that discussion.
So it's back, it'll be there, it'll be a carry, carryover, I guarantee, moving forward. It's going to have to be there, but we are making progress. So, and this is, you know, this, this schedule even with August, a lot of the work's done, we just have to recheck it. And once we do, then, yeah, hopefully we'll be ready to go in the spring and have one of the one contractors willing to come in. I don't think that contractor, the last one is in business anymore, so. It's just kind of an interesting growth. We can get eight to eleven bidders for street work right now. Nobody wants to touch a panel here and a panel down the block. It's just hard to make money.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the update on the working partners' worksheets and good luck to Lee and the sidewalk project here. Here, send out the badge you're here. Anything else about the city council goal update that Chris supplied us? The limited reports, mayor's report. The only I M L mentioned is that there's going to be more discussion about ground reconserving for the cotton and tree all departments on 1 P.M. on August 21st. And I contacted their marketing director to see how big the scope we want to make this. The only thing I'm volunteering the city for is to maybe have a little dirt there for this easy to scoop up. So this is 21 or 31? August 21st, I think, at 1 P.M. I think it's Wednesday. But the last memory I got was that CHI was very excited about it. Looking forward to doing that, so I haven't got a reply back from the marketing director to see how big the scope they want. I thought you want tents, chairs, everything else, shovels, hard hats. But I said that's on Axiom and on CHI because of
I kind of figured since we're picking a bunch of dirt out there with Lancer right now, it's a friend of mine who works out there. Yeah, I think we did it hard. That's actually, oh, personally right now.
All right, I saw that truck.
Well, and the, the excavating company, they were dragging their scraper through the middle of that, kind of picking up black dirt and piling it over to the south.
Today.
Dust coming out of there today.
The dust was from that.
But that's, just so people know about that. And it's also a thank you party for Joe Madison going away. Something next week, I think. I don't remember exactly who sent off for Joe. And that's about all I had. I probably have to stay in the meeting and start, get that started again this, start the school year. What's happening in Chow Care and I didn't really I missed the last meeting and I missed a couple of. The council reports or committee reports or commission members, council members?
I met Jessie, new CG executive director. I think she's going to be fabulous.
Didn't get to her, new faces.
Yeah, I mean, there's issues to fill, but I think Jessie's very capable.
Glad to be there, glad to have her. Anything from Chris's report?
Now, just to remind everybody, kind of the part of the most important thing to speak is the Uptown Street Skate Master Plan will be presented at First Street Community Center later on Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:30.
No formal presentation, just come as you go.
Similar to what we did with Fourth Street. I will say that I think whether or not our engineers want to do this or not, we're kind of forcing them to have these additional meetings, whether it be Uptown Street Skate or like Fourth Street. We had probably 60% of the homeowners on that three-block stretch.
Yeah, well, it was really well attended and I was really pleased with the way it was set up. You know, the two maps, so you could have multiple people looking at their area. And I, I thought Dave and the other gentleman did a great job answering questions. Looking forward to
Yeah, so killing them with information, making sure everybody knows what's going on. Speaking of all the dirt that is being moved, I feel a little bit sad our trucks are moving, at least three of them right now, are moving dirt that was additional ground when we did the public worksite, where they included that as part of the Lancer project in an attempt to save some dollars. So we are hauling dirt over there. I did reach out to Mr. Wright today to let him know, first of all, apologize for all the dust. We have been dusting a lot once this year, but we're going to put calcium up there tomorrow. And it does kind of continue to control the dust up there. And then, of course, when Business 30 gets under construction, those buildings will go to Bryant first. This should be moving there, so just trying to eliminate as much dust coming from that area as possible. So I think that's about it, other than it's going to be extremely busy for the next couple of months.
You tell the new fiscal year started with all the motions and everything that we have. We're allocating money and getting jobs started. It works hard. None of the dirt that's going to the Glen Street extension is from the pile by the fire in urgency of people.
No, it's all the, it's all the dirt.
It's all the dirt we dug out for the two buildings on Bryant Road.
It's hard to scale out because when you go and look at that amount of dirt at the public worksite, you're like, there's no way they're going to use all of that. And then you start to spread it out and you're like, oh.
Lower a little bit. In the general area, Burger has to go.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, he just sent his update yesterday. I will be honest, if you haven't had a chance to read his email. It's been an interesting couple of weeks for me. We've had a couple of senior scandal designation, and of course, I share with you that we've had a couple of individuals that have not had the best behavior at the municipal pool, and I've revoked their privileges for this foreseeable future. So, yeah, it's been eight years, I don't know how to do that. Goes through, I have all came in a few weeks period and dug it up and then a longer, even more.
Okay, she's needed.
Together or separately?
They have started to gang up.
Strategy.
Yeah, they figure, you know, kind of being at home, like, can't get as mad at all three of them.
Anything else on Chris's report? Anything else to come before this council at this time? Who wants to meet our adjourned? Thank you very much.